2013. We are fully assembled this evening. And the first matter that I would like to mention is that CCAT is here this evening, videotaping us in real time. And also for people who might be watching us at home, we welcome them. Initially, because we have a somewhat busy agenda tonight, I'd like to take up the simpler matters, if you will. And the first of these is an administrative matter. It's the approval of our meeting minutes for the months of, or the meetings of May 14, 2013, and July 11, 2013. Let me inquire of the board members whether they have, each of them, had an opportunity to review these meeting minutes.
Yes.
I have.
Yes.
Yes, I have.
I have.
Do I hear a motion with regard to these meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written, as they stipulate a general consensus of what transpired in these meetings.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this? I would like to thank our clerk publicly. These are minutes that represent hours of testimony over the dates involved because of the controversial nature of the solar petition, which we will take up again this evening. So, thank you for your efforts on that, Ms. Carlinho. And now, let's go to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, those meeting minutes now are part of the official record. Next, let's move to the new case petitions this evening. And the first case is case number 13-959. The petitioner being Sign Design Inc., of 170 Liberty Street in Brockton, Massachusetts, on behalf of the property owner, DP, I guess he's called Mickey Higgins, Jr., of 68 South Main Street, Osonet, Massachusetts, regarding property located at 303 Tremont Street in Carver, Massachusetts. The applicant is seeking a special permit and/or variance to allow internally illuminated signage and digital petroleum signage. In accordance to the plans of record, the property is owned General Business District in accordance to Town of Carver Assessors Map 95 Lot 4-A. Is anyone here from Sign Design? So, if you could approach the table. And Mickey, is Mickey here tonight?
No.
I would have been interested in meeting Mickey. Tell him that we said hello. Okay. So, what I'd like to do is to turn this over to you for a little bit and have you explain to the board what it is that you intend for this particular site.
Sure. My name is Ward Simeon. I am representing Sign Design of Brockton, Mass. And as it was stated in the petition, we would like to request relief from the zoning law by law that we are allowed to install this pylon sign and the canopy sign with an internally illuminated signage. The site currently exists with illuminated signage. I'd like to think our version is a little more updated and appealing to the community. We have the signage on the board in front of you. The signage on the left is non-internally illuminated. The signage on the right, the one canopy sign and the pylon sign, is where we're requesting illumination and digital petroleum units.
The pylon sign is the one in the middle?
No, the pylon sign's far right.
That's where the digital is going to be?
Correct.
Okay. And the other signs are not internally illuminated. Where are they going to be?
The building ID sign, which is the one at the top, goes above the front door. That's lit with coos neck lamps, very traditional. And the other two go on the sides.
Now, is it true that you've been before the planning board already on this matter?
It is true.
Can you give us some background on that? Because we don't often communicate with the planning board. We have our own independent orbit here.
Got it. We have been before the planning board and we were approved for the number of signs and the design of the signs. And then, we were directed to you folks for the request for internal illumination and digital petroleum. And that process was confirmed on July 10 by the planning board. The decision was back on June 18.
Now, when you talk about digital, are we talking about anything that's going to be moving, or is it stationary?
Stationary.
Okay.
How far off the road is the sign going to be?
I think the setback's actually noted on the site plan, which is the second floor. It's actually farther off the road than the current.
Five feet from the closest point to the road.
What was the previous site? Who owned the previous site?
He owned it.
Yeah.
Delta Gas.
Was it Delta? Oh, okay.
The one across from Dakers. He came before us for the same thing.
Yeah.
I actually have a previous decision.
From this board?
Is this an existing sign that's already there?
No. There is an existing sign that has internal illumination and has, or had, digital faces. That's going to be removed.
That's the one that's in that center island that's there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think somebody knocked it down. I went by there.
Is that part of the planning board decision that all exterior signs are to be removed but for the ones that you're petitioning?
That was not part of the decision. That is the way my customers do business. They come in and they rebrand completely.
So, you're going to be taking down all the signs at the site that currently exist?
Yes, sir.
Would that include the signs that are currently on the building itself?
Yeah, the whole building's going to be down, so yes.
So, all signs will be removed?
Correct.
That are there currently? And you intend to put these signs there that you've already approached to the planning board? Any other signs beyond these signs that you're intending to put up? So, for us, really, we're really only making a decision on the digital and the internal illumination issues. Because the planning board had jurisdiction on the other sign matters. Is that true?
That's how I was directed, yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do. Is everything inside this sign lit up internally or just the privacy?
It is. The nice thing about the signage for moving with barns is that if you look at your illustration, all the blue, we actually use an opaque vinyl, so it does not let, doesn't change colors, doesn't do anything funny. It doesn't, it's not glaring.
Doesn't twinkle?
Doesn't twinkle.
Blink.
They're not the twinkling. So, yeah, so the whole thing lights up, it's not glaring.
Now, the sign you proposed, is that the sign that is literally in here? Or are you going to add more illuminated numbers for different grades of gas?
No.
Okay, so it's just the two panels with the lights?
Yep.
Are they regular fluorescents?
In the rest of the sign, yes. The lighting is regular fluorescent.
Except for the digital, obviously.
Correct.
And how long will the light stay on? Is it going to stay on 24/7?
Just the hours of operation.
Just the hours of operation that it's turned off? Okay.
Is that what you told the planning board also? That it would just be on for the hours of operation?
Yes, sir.
In the packet, it indicates that it can stay on a half hour before and a half hour after.
Hours of operation, correct.
Hours of operation.
We usually put them on timers, so they come on and off.
Somebody wrote something.
You don't want to pay the electric company any more than you have. What else?
And you're tearing down that whole building and...
Are you doing all the pumps and everything? Taking up the old tanks, the whole nine yards? God bless you.
What else? You know, on the face of it, this would seem like a pretty easy decision, on the face of it. But we face a bit of a conundrum with our bylaws. So, let me address this with you now and suggest an approach that hopefully will get everybody to a comfort level with this. We have a lengthy and detailed sign bylaw. And the jurisdiction for sign cases typically rests with the planning board, as you recognized. But occasionally, one of these cases wins its way to us. And section 3531 of the bylaws hit illumination standards. Under sub-paragraph A, it says internal illumination. Internal illumination is prohibited. Period. However, under 3522, section H, we have what would appear to be a contradiction. It says, among other things, no sign shall be internally illuminated except those utilizing the soft glow method. So, we have consecutive sections in our bylaw that say, okay, well, maybe you can do it, but then again, you can't at all. So, we get to a point where we have what would appear to be internally inconsistent propositions, and how do we deal with that? Now, one of the approaches is to determine which of these bylaws became effective most recently. Then, it could be argued that the one that was passed more recently impliedly overruled the earlier one. And kudos to the town clerk's office, to whom I gave this research project just a couple of days ago. They were able to tell me that section 3500 and its various provisions, the sign bylaw, initially became effective in 1998. But there were changes along the way. And as I understood it in speaking with them, 3522H, which allows illumination if it's using the soft glow method, came into effect in 2006. The more recent provision, better for you guys. So, that was one thing that I kind of had to figure out. And then, I thought, well, there's a policy in the law that says that if there's ambiguity in a contract or in some sort of business context or in a law, the ambiguity is often construed against the drafter of that provision. The drafter of these provisions was the town. So, if there's ambiguity here, I think the argument could be made, in addition to the latter bylaw approach that I just mentioned to you, I think the argument could be made that if there is ambiguity here, it should be construed in favor of the party who is looking for relief. So, for me, anyway, I can get around this ambiguity based on those two points. My question of you is, does this sign use the soft glow method?
I've been in the sign business for about six years. And I'm not, I'm not 100% confident of what the soft glow method is. They're fluorescent bulbs. And again, the, what I know is that we use fluorescent bulbs and that the vinyl is non-translucent, which means it does not let full light through. Whether or not that fulfills what your definition of soft glow from, I'm sorry, you quoted that was written in 2006?
2006.
Right when I was coming in.
Clear fluorescent or white fluorescent?
I think we carry both, but typically we use white.
Yeah, white fluorescents do actually satisfy the soft glow requirement.
Mr. Maynard, can you help the rest of us with that?
Yeah, under that, under that provision, the soft glow...
What is soft glow, if you know?
Basically, internal illumination with a, with a cool white fluorescent. So, that it gives just a backlight as opposed to a direct light through something translucent, where the sign is not translucent to begin with. And if they use white bulbs, then they will satisfy the soft glow method.
See, we're all learning something this evening. What about the digital sign? How is that going to be lit?
They are LEDs. They're LEDs. And actually, if the board is interested, we did bring our DAP products rep with us to answer any of your technical questions, if that's helpful.
It might be.
Okay.
Is that person here?
He is.
Come right up. If one of you wants to vacate, to allow him to sit, that would be great. You know what we're talking about when we discuss soft glow?
Yeah, he, I think, explained it very well. Not a term used in the sign industry a lot, but I think he explained it very well.
Okay. And the LEDs, tell us about that. This is for the digital sign now.
Yeah, for the gas price changes. I mean, it's a different animal. It's a newer technology. Back when those codes were written, this technology probably didn't even exist. I mean, back in the day, it was incandescent light bulbs. Today, it's all LED. But basically, all these are, are price changes. They're not messages. All they have are is a seven-segment LED digit, kind of like your alarm clock. It's a seven-segment digit. And displays, obviously, the cost of the two products. It allows the customer to be able to change it remotely with a little handheld key fob rather than have to go out manually with a stick or a ladder. They do have photocells on them that automatically dim them at night, which is very important. They constantly read the ambient light outside, so as it gets darker, it will increment down, down to a certain, to a level at night where it's not a glowing light. That's very important. As a manufacturer, we really stress that. I do have some documents that I'd like to leave with you if someone is interested in taking a look at, just kind of explaining our technology. We've, we've helped a lot of cities and towns write ordinances over the technology, not only the gas price changes, but also electronic message centers, which is coming around.
When you're done, you can leave those with our clerk.
Okay, great. It gives you an understanding of the technology. You know, we're finding a lot of cities and towns, the technology didn't exist when the ordinance were written. So, it's a good guideline, and it talks about the brightness and how to enforce it, you know? There's a lot of different manufacturers out there, these products, that they don't have the proper dimming levels, they don't have the photocells. They're the same brightness during the day as they are at night. So, those are things to be cautious of.
Mr. Maynard, would the digital lighting that he talked about satisfy the soft glow method, in your opinion?
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Everybody good?
I'm good.
Would any member of the public like to weigh in? Seeing no hands raised?
I do have a question. The height of the, the brick wall that's going to be there and the distance between the top of that wall to the bottom of the first sign? What are the numbers on that?
Sure. The height of the wall, as it's spec'd in the layout, is 24 inches. And then, I have its overall height. I do not have, I believe these are in your packet?
156 minus 153.
There's also a header that's on the top.
That's included in the 156.
Right. We don't have an exact measurement here, but I can certainly add that this...
Well, my concern's going to be, is this sign, the closest point of this sign to the road is five feet. The average pickup truck's front end is five feet. And if I'm going to be pulling out of there and I need to look down the road to see traffic to see if it's safe, that sign's going to be sitting right in my view. So, are you opposed to, say, pushing this back maybe two or three more feet just for safety purposes?
Not, not at all. It was not brought up at the planning board level, so it was not added from the sign plan. But I think the way that Mr. Hunter was kind enough to explain it to me is there really wasn't a setback, so, I don't know that I'm sure, is, let's see if you read me, one of the reasons that it's where it is now and not in the middle of that island is for safety reasons, for visibility. And I know that's very important.
I agree 100%. But, but it is like right there, right as your entrance and exit point is, you know, anybody taking, you know, a left-hand turn out of there, they're really going to be stressed unless they're in a shorter vehicle to see beyond that sign to see if it's safe. But it's something to consider.
Sure.
That opening underneath Walters, just shy of three feet.
Just shy of three feet?
About 33 inches in total. Based on the design plan.
I know, because I'm looking at that wall, looking at two feet, and that looks like a smaller space than that wall.
Right, but you look at your overall, which is 156 inches, and then to the bottom of the sign's 123. So, the math lays out at 33 inches.
Yeah, but there's other calculations in there that we're just speculating in there.
So, what would you like to see, Mr. Collins?
I would like to see at least, say, eight feet back. Just an extra three feet, I mean.
It was dropped on there by the, I believe, by the architect doing the work.
Maybe because it's even with the island that's still there, you kind of, kind of made it, made a nice little...
Possibly, aesthetically.
Yeah, I'm not sure the logic.
I mean, anybody in here that owns a truck and understand exactly what I'm saying.
Sure. And again, I know that safety has been a huge, is a huge proponent for this company. I've worked with them for a lot of years, and I'm sure.
Yeah, and I know the speed limit on the road's like 45, but everybody does at least 55.
So, you're good with another three-foot pushback on that sign?
Unless there's a, something underground or, we can certainly confirm that.
Okay.
So, do you want to continue this for a month and then get back to us?
Is that technically part of what we're here for?
Nope.
So, I'm not sure what our...
We're here on, we're here on lighting.
Right. And I'm not sure how to go back to the decision.
If, if I may, we could make the approval, if we so granted, subject to another look at, by the planning board, just on that. It, it could be, I assume, even with just Jack Hunter?
Okay.
Before it's constructed.
So, you're suggesting we go to vote on the merits of the light issue?
Right, with the...
With the...
With the condition, subject to the approval of the planning board for placement, three feet back.
An additional three feet?
An additional three feet. Because, as she says, she doesn't know if there's something...
Could be something underground.
It could be something under there or...
Which is understandable.
Right.
Sure.
And, and I think, once we approve the lit sign, I would feel more comfortable saying, subject to the approval of the planning board, having, you know, they've gone, they've done all this work. Are you all through with the planning board? Completely throughs?
As far as the signage, we're through with the planning board, yes.
Yeah, okay. It's, it'd probably be a relatively small thing to get that in there.
And Jack's concern is like more than all the others that plans really well, so I'm sure between the three or four of us, we can figure that out.
Any further discussion that the board wishes to have on this case?
I'm good.
Good.
So, let me close the hearing and ask for a motion.
Yeah, I move that we close the hearing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the sign as they stipulate with the soft glow, thank you, lighting to be fine with further approval from the planning board with an additional three feet step back. I think I worded that correctly. Perhaps.
So, in other words, we're, we're...
We are approving the sign with the lights.
Approving the special permit for the sign based upon the plans of record.
Correct.
But with a referral back to the planning board on the issue of a three-foot pushback on the sign.
Correct.
Is that what we were trying to say?
Thank you.
I second what he meant.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done? So, Ms. Carlinho, would you advise them of the decision and how long and so forth?
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Drive back carefully.
And she thought she was nervous.
Case number 13-960 is next up on the agenda for this evening. The petitioner is Michelle Pimental of Box 6375 in Plymouth, regarding property located at 12 Craig Street in Carver. The applicant is seeking a special permit in order to apparently make legal an accessory apartment that was not permitted. The property is zoned residential agricultural district in accordance to Town of Carver Assessors Map 59 Lot 21-0. Is Michelle here? Come right up. You can come up to.
And she's sharing the house with him.
Yes.
Now, you, you folks are the prospective purchasers of this property.
Yes.
Okay. Before we enlarge this to talk to other people who may be involved in this, can you tell me what it is that you plan to do? Aside from buying the property, what do you intend to do with it?
I live on the in-law side. My daughter, her husband, and the children will live on the other side.
Okay.
Because of the fact that I have my own house that I already sold, I'm a widow now, and I have asthma, and I have heart problems, and I just can't keep up with my house anymore, so...
Now, forgive me for asking this, please. How old are you?
57.
Reason I ask that is because our bylaw specifies 55 and older as being senior. I don't think of ourselves as being senior at all.
I wish I could say younger.
But that's what the bylaw says. Okay. So, you intend to be the owner of this house. Is that true? You're going to be taking title in your own name?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And the house is currently subject to a purchase and sale agreement? Subject to the zoning board addressing this issue, which has become a title issue in the case, I would imagine.
And won't approve the appraisal and won't approve the purchase if we can't get the in-law legalized.
Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to tell us about...
Why we're moving back to Carver? My family was, I'm originally a holdup, which my whole family was started in Carver. And the property that we owned at the end of Fosdick Road, we sold 20 years ago. It's kind of weird, I'm moving back to where everyone else started. But I like it here, and I feel that my grandchildren would be better here.
Well, there's a lot to like about Carver. I agree with you. Before I let you go, I want to ask you a question. And then, whoever else wants to ask, ask. My question is this. When did you find out that this in-law was not permitted? You found out from the appraiser?
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Do you know the size of the in-law apartment?
I do have the, I believe it's 760. I do have the, I pulled the permits and the plans from, I don't know how to read them. I don't do this stuff. I do have all of that that I got from... The owners are here, they might know the actual...
Well, is that a plot plant I saw? Was that a plot plant I saw you...
Give me a minute. Oh, God, no. My husband's a police officer, that one's a little...
No, no, not a plot plant, a plot plant.
He's still a little nervous from the last case.
So, I have my inspections. I have the MLS, and I have photos of the in-law.
That was funny.
Can I see the photos, please?
That's the in-law I'm picking up.
Okay, you have to do some...
You're going to have to work with us.
You have to work with us.
No, no. This is the MLS, and we did already have the final exceptions on the in-law side.
So, this is the front door.
That door would be this door?
This door.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it two floors?
Yes.
The in-law is two floors? And you said the in-law is attached to the... So... So the entrance to this from the exterior, is that from the inside of the mudroom? Or from the outside somewhere from...
Um, there's a back entrance, and then there's...
No front entrance?
No.
No front walk?
No separate, no separate...
No separate front.
Front entrance, so...
Could you do me just one favor? Nope. If this were the regular house, the sheet of paper, how would this be?
Um, well, this is the upstairs, but if that was, this would, right like this. You walk in, this is the door that...
Okay, so the breezeway would be here?
Yes.
To there, so basically that's sort of this front here?
Yes.
Okay. And the door to the outside is to the back, you said?
Yes. So there's, um, you can see it on, um, one of these plans back there.
So there's no front door to this, okay.
Can I see that plan, Ms. Clark?
This one?
Yeah.
Don't mess it up. And what's the total square footage of the apartment? Seven sixty for two, the owners are here, okay, we'll need to talk about that. But it's two floors, right?
So when you said seven sixty, was that one floor or two floors? Did you remember your math from school?
It's upstairs, downstairs, in-law.
So it's got two, thirty, twenty-four, pretty hefty.
Fortunately, we have someone who is very mathematically adept on this board. The, uh, the brain cells are working over there.
That's all Carl's space, right?
Yes. Thank you.
What kind of timeframe are you under with your bank?
Fourteen, fifteen, nineteen.
Time frame.
Oh, um, our, our, um, rate is locked in until the end of August. If we need to, we can pay to try to get it extended, um, we don't have the money to do that. If possible, to get it, because we're supposed to close on fifteen. She has to be out of her house by the end of the month. I'm supposed to be out of our apartment by the end of the month, and our pre-approval is only going until the end of...
Rates are going up.
Yeah, exactly.
It's dominoes for you.
Because she's retiring, so we're, the house is in her name, she's retiring, but we're paying the mortgage so she can...
You're, you're living in Plymouth now, right?
Yes.
How many children do you have?
I have two.
How old are they?
Um, an eight-year-old and an almost three-year-old.
Where's the eight-year-old gonna go to school?
We're trying to get him in Carver, but we need to get this approved for...
So that's another issue for you.
Transfer him, yeah. He's actually, my husband and I will be here soon, he's at football practice, because we already transferred him to the Cowboys. He's at football practice right now.
In Carver?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a building permit that went with the addition or the in-law?
We'll inquire of the, uh, of the sellers with regard to what led up to this. Do we have a calculation there, Mr. Maynard?
Yep.
Almost.
Almost. Fifty-four. You got seven hundred and twenty square feet on the first floor? And you have five hundred and fifty-four on the second, taking the storage out of it and, uh, the pieces and parts. So you have a total...
Seven twenty and five fifty-four.
Seven twenty, twelve seventy-four.
And the, uh, bylaw states that these, uh, accessories are good only up to eight hundred square feet by right. So you'd need relief on the square footage, because it exceeds obviously the eight hundred square feet. Does anyone else have any questions of these two nice women? Do you have any, uh, thing that you would like to add?
Our case.
Okay. Thank you, you can step back.
I don't think so.
Um, the sellers. Yes.
They also want to, um, point out the fact that, um, they're also looking for a size setback?
No, they have a variance for that.
They do.
Hi.
Hi, your name is?
My name is Kim Mitchell, and I'm the owner or resident of twelve Craig Street. I'm here with my husband also.
He'd like to come up with you? You wanna, he'd prefer to stay back here, so, back there, so you keep your wife on the hot seat, is that it?
That's what I said.
No, i- if you're more comfortable back there, that's fine.
My husband is disabled, so... So...
So let me, um...
This in-law, first of all, was this, I call it an in-law, this was not, this was put on the market as a large home, as an addition. That's how we've used it, that's how it's been, was put on the market as an addition. There's no, there's an open flow to this room. My husband is disabled. We've used this first-floor bedroom of that addition side of the house, and we've used that first-floor kitchen on that all through the years that we've had it. This is the third time that we've actually would be up as a petition. The first time, um, it was for an in-law, and we were denied for, uh, under sixty-five. Then the second time, then, we requested it for an over sixty-five was for a parent, for my parent. We have the, um, Board of Appeals paperwork here, that was in, uh, two thousand and three. And then my father got very sick, and we had to cancel our appointment for that. So we've been using it open and freely. Now, the second floor that they speak of on that, uh, addition is a storage. There's no doors, there's no, um, there's no, that's just a storage area of the second floor.
Okay, so it's listed as a bedroom here?
On the second floor of the in-law, yeah. There's no doorways, there's no nothing up there.
Okay, okay. Let me, uh, kind of go through the history of this case for all of us here, as well as for you and those who are present and watching at home. In September of two thousand and two, in case number six eighty-three, um, an application was received by the board requesting that an accessory apartment be granted. And according to the decision, which I have here in my hand, um, there was a concern that, the way the bylaws were then written, it would only allow elderly relatives to access, to occupy the accessory.
Correct.
And you didn't fit, or no one with you, inhabiting with you, fit that definition.
Correct.
Whatever elderly is, I don't know. All right. So, based on that information, the board found that, uh, you could go ahead and build your addition, but not an accessory, first of all. But not an accessory.
And we did, that's for, so now we went following...
All right. Okay, so we're in agreement on, on what happened, and you understood that at the time? Okay. Then you filed a subsequent request where you renewed your application for an accessory. And that, I believe, was in two thousand and three, case seven one seven. And after filing that application, you wrote a letter to the planning board. This was on June tenth, two thousand and three. Actually, I shouldn't, I should correct myself. A Deborah Stork.
Right.
Who is Deborah Stork?
That would be the sister, my sister, who applied for an initial...
One of the co-owners of the house.
Correct.
So she wrote a letter to the planning board, probably misdirected to the planning board, because the application that had been filed for the accessory was to the zoning board. But in the letter to the planning board, she said that in the best interests of our grandmother, the family has decided to place her in, uh, an elderly home, and for this reason, we are withdrawing our application for the in-law. So case seven seventeen was withdrawn. Therefore, leaving case, the decision on case six eighty-three, the law of the case, meaning that you still did not have a proper permit for the accessory.
Okay, I had it, I have the notice of caring for my father, so I, I'm confused about that, but that's, that's okay. That's, that was filed on April twenty-ninth, uh, two thousand and three, but that was case seven seventeen, so...
Yes, seven seventeen was withdrawn without prejudice on, um, June eleventh, two thousand and three.
Okay.
Okay? Leaving you back in the position that you were after case decision six eighty-three was made, which was, you're good for the addition, but not for an accessory, because you don't fit under the definition of the bylaw. Now sometime between two thousand and three and today, a kitchen got in there. When was the kitchen built?
Well, there was, we were approved, we had that, and they were approved with everything in there except the sink. That was the only thing that was not allowed to be in there.
Do you have anything that would document what you just said to us?
No. Oh, that was ten years ago, and we were told that we couldn't have the sink. That was the only thing.
Who told you that?
I don't remember. I really don't. I don't.
Well, wait a minute, you're out of order. Go ahead, sorry.
I really, I'm sorry, I don't know. We used this as a, as a whole house, so I, I, I'm not sure. Then when we started using it, there's, you know, their family coming, and my father and mother coming, we did, you know, but we've had it, we've had it inspected since, so... I, I, you know, I have to eat whole humble pie here, because I, we, we kept it as an addition. We did have the two kitchens. We kept it in the family as one heating zone. We paid one electric bill. We've used it for my husband's disability.
Let me, uh, interrupt you just for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
I get all of that. The building permit, which was issued in this case, has just been handed to me.
Okay.
I want to read to you what it says. It says that, uh, um, you folks have permission to construct, and I'm gonna quote now.
Okay.
Twenty-four foot by thirty foot, two-story addition with living room, den, bedroom, and bath, and now, all in caps, no kitchen facilities. Now, when this case came to us for tonight, I note that the building inspector in his letter of denial, uh, mentioned that at some point, a kitchen was added in here. He doesn't know when, thereby turning this into what he characterizes as an illegal apartment. When Ms. Pimental filed her, uh, application before this board for this evening, she mentions that the request for her, or the reason for her request is to legalize an illegal in-law apartment. So my question of you is, can you tell us when this kitchen was added?
Originally, I think the whole kitchen, honestly, originally, the whole kitchen was added except for a sink. I, I'm almost one hundred percent sure, and then maybe in two thousand and five, we did the, a little bit more, when my parents were there, um, staying with us at one point, that would be the kitchen sink, one corner of the kitchen sink, and I think two thousand and five, it was, it was, the kitchen sink was added.
At, at what point did you become aware that what had been done on that side of the house was not properly permitted?
When I read it with her petition. Because we had just kept it as a single family with an addition, so I wasn't, I didn't know, I, we put it on the market as an, you know, a possible in-law. That would be something that they would have to do.
Did you, um, attend any of the board's hearings back in two thousand and two relating to case number six eighty-three, when you were looking for an accessory then?
Yes, yeah, I did.
And wasn't it, didn't you understand that the decision of the board in two thousand and two was to allow the addition, but not an accessory?
And we didn't have it for a lo, for quite a few years, by that time. Yeah, I know.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I actually have one question now, where, my question is that bedroom on the second floor. You're saying it's not used, it's just strictly storage, there's no doors, there's no bedroom whatsoever up there?
No.
If that's the case, Mr. Chairman, we're looking at seven twenty square feet for the first floor only, which does fall under the bylaw of an accessory. But this has got walkthrough written all over it.
Is there a closet in that room?
Yes, there is a closet.
Makes it a bedroom.
Without doors?
Not without doors.
There was a rock in there.
No, there's no door hinges, there's no doorways, there's no door gems, there's no even...
I need to see this.
Now, we do have pictures taken.
And this, I believe she handed me, this is the picture of the in-law kitchen?
Correct.
So you're saying everything here was constructed, except you didn't drop a sink in it, all the cabinets and...
Everything, yeah. Everything's been...
Who did, who did the kitchen work?
Probably, um, the builder that was...
Jeffrey Taylor?
Yes, I was gonna say pastor, I'm sorry.
I mean, he would, he would have built it without having a permit for it?
He would have put the kitchen in. He would have done everything...
And there should be a record in the building file. We've had, we've had occasions where electrical and plumbing facilities have been installed in homes without permits. And what this board has done in the past is ask for a full-blown inspection. Now, that may have been done with this, but, um, but to satisfy the fact that it may have been built by, you know, your brother-in-law and his, two of his friends coming in, and I know how to hook up a stove, kind of thing. We've asked for full-blown inspections, and I'm trying to find out if this is going to be necessary here.
Right. I, I think all permits, I think it's all, I mean, I think Jeff Taylor did it all, except for the sink. I think it's all been done, all was done.
So who did do the sink?
My father did the sink.
And was there a permit pulled?
For, to put the sink in?
The plumbing.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Do we have every...
No, we're asking all, I mean, I'm just, I would love to have the new owners in and do the proper thing the right way, and take the stand, but she's just up, her back is up against the wall for time-wise, with her interest rates and with the kids coming into school. And with my husband's disability, it's been a hardship being in this house as it is. We're all alone in this house now, and it's completely empty, both sides, but he and I. And, um, so we're just, we just would like this to, you know, get by, and then have the new owners do the proper thing and get it properly, you know, a- as an in-law or as an addition, uh, as an addition with kitchen. I don't know how you would put that, but we just would like the new owners to get, have the chance to get into the cell and do it the right way.
Any further discussion?
I have none at this time. It's just a quick statement. I'd agree with, uh, Stephen. I think we should do a walkthrough.
What's the time constraint?
Well, her interest, her mortgage ends on the end of September first for the mortgage company, so she can... So, and our passing date was for August fifteenth. So if we could have a walkthrough, and then maybe just, you know, I know that's not something that we normally do, come back and get a quick approval for them to get their, into the house.
I must confess that I'm far more sympathetic to the position of the buyer than I am to the seller.
I would understand completely. I do understand completely, though I do want you to know that it was on the market as, you know, an addition.
With all due respect, whatever it was on the market for begs the question.
Okay.
Which is, you were told no, and it got built anyway. And it's clear from the records you were told no, you were told no by this board, and you were told no in the building permit explicitly. How that kitchen got in there, I don't know. And I'm not really hearing from you how it got in there either. And you lived there.
And I lived there.
So, um, if it is the feeling of the board that a walkthrough needs to be performed, then I think in deference to the buyer and her financial interests as well as her family interests, we'll try to do that quickly and maybe have a special meeting before the end of the month. What is, what are your thoughts about that?
I'm, I'm very amenable to that.
I'd be fine with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's within our rights, but can we request that the owner find a way to have the inspector come out and actually look at the plumbing and make sure that it is up to code?
Well, I did do a whole, I did get our home inspection done.
Home inspection isn't the Carver Building Inspector. They're two different people, and we deal with the Carver Building Department itself.
Well, we'll pull, we'll pull everything in the file to see what's.
But if there was no permit pulled on it, it hasn't been inspected. And it's just in the best interest of the new potential buyer.
That, that and the electrical, I assume there's a stove in there, and if there was no permit to install a stove or plumbing, which, that's what I'm hearing, then that's something we, we've done in the past, and it's certainly something we need to do before we allow this. I mean, I'm amenable to having another meeting next week. Um, there's all, there's all seven of us here, so if at least five of us can make it.
Would you be willing to allow access to the house for the building and/or plumbing inspector to come in?
One hundred percent, absolutely. For the new owner, we'd do, we'd do that, I mean, we would do anything to get this new owner in.
We could, I just really want Stevie to start, Plymouth starts a week behind Carver, I don't want him to be two weeks behind.
I get that, but I think you also understand that there are complications here. And, uh, I'm not happy with the situation, I am not.
These kind of things generally tend to come back, um, one way or the other. Is every, can anyone do Saturday, this Saturday?
I can.
Yep. I'm gonna go kill something.
No, cannot? Let's discuss another possibility.
I have no problem going there by myself at any other time, if the group can go Saturday to expedite this, if the owners will into that.
I leave tomorrow for a week, won't be back until the fall Thursday.
Are you available Sunday?
I could do Sunday.
Are you available Sunday?
Yes.
Are you available Sunday?
My home, yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's my wedding shower. Um, I can be there in the morning, I'll come early.
I mean.
We don't do afternoons.
Oh, I'll come before, I'll come before the, my bridal shower, I certainly will.
I mean, I, I don't know that you necessarily need to be there.
You don't need to be there, but you're potentially buying the home, so.
If it's better for me to be there, I'll.
Actually, I don't see that it makes a difference if you're there or not.
If you're there or not.
Okay.
Go do your shower.
What do we want to do, ten o'clock?
The shower starts until twelve, so, I mean.
Ten.
Ten's fine.
Ten?
Ten.
Um, and then we'll need to do a quick turnaround on a special meeting to address this case and the issues that it, that it, that arise.
I'm not opposed to following Thursday.
What's the following Thursday?
The fifteenth.
Jim?
Okay, so far.
Man?
I think so, I'm not sure about C P C, let me check.
Steve? Fifteenth, next Thursday.
I can do it.
Eric, you're going to be gone.
I'll be back for that.
You'll be back.
Yep.
I'm good.
Is anybody living in the house now?
No, it's empty.
It is empty.
Yeah, I mean, my, um, I live in the house with my husband.
Oh, okay.
And this Sunday is what date?
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
The eleventh at ten, right?
Eleventh at ten.
Okay. Before we leave this, and ladies, you can stay right where you are, we have a roomful of people who are anxiously awaiting the call of the third case. I do want to open this up briefly for public comment on this matter, though, before we pass and get our motions taken care of insofar as these dates that we just discussed. Does anybody have anything that they want to say? As to this case?
Yes, to this case.
Go ahead.
All right, um, what I'd like to know is, who wrote and developed the posting, Mr. Chairman?
Who wrote and developed the posting? It's based on the application of the buyer as well as the letter of denial from the building inspector. I think, I think I already answered that question.
The posting says existing illegal in-law apartment, but our bylaws do not have anything having to do with in-law apartments. You're accessory apartment, but we do not have in-law apartments. And no bylaw was related in this posting as twenty-two sixty, which is the accessory part. That's my first question. The second one is, is with that posting being said, who is termed as an illegal?
Again, for the second time, maybe the third now, the determination as to the legality or illegality of this was made initially by the building inspector, and then followed up on in the application by the buyer.
Now, the petitioner here, she is, she's not the owner of the property here in case, she doesn't have purchase and sale no questions about, but under chapter forty-eight, it does say that it's supposed to be the owner of the property or their, or they deem necessary for it, so I don't know if they deem that as your.
I would deem her necessary in this point.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, now.
Agent is the word you're looking for.
That's what I was thinking of, thank you very much. The other thing here is that because our bylaws have no regulation for in-law, and in-law signifies family. And the family relationship between the current owner and her family members that live in that addition clearly shows under the Moore versus City of East Cleveland, a blood marriage or adoption rule with this case. Also, under the health and safety laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which supersedes our bylaws, Tom Constance wants to chime in on that. All right, it actually states what a dwelling, a dwelling unit is, what kitchen facilities are. It also states in there what toilets and tubs, washpans, bathrooms have to include. But one of the things in this case here is that the owner should provide and install and maintain locks. Every dwelling unit shall be capable of being secured against unlawful entry. Now, I don't think there's been any testimony here that those doorways have any locks on them at all to go back and forth, and therefore, not being locked up does not make it an apartment. And I'd like to submit these as evidence here.
Evidence on whose behalf?
On the town of Carver, actually, and the, uh, the town, as a resident.
Mr. Belvin?
Yes, sir.
We are the town of Carver tonight.
Correct.
You're not submitting evidence on the part of the town of Carver, you're submitting evidence on your own behalf. We'll accept it, but don't speak for the town of Carver. On this issue, we speak for the town of Carver. Am I making myself clear? Thank you. Are you done with your statement?
Uh, actually, no, I have one.
Would you please come to the point, so that we can move on to the next case?
My point is, I don't think the posting, as the way it was presented, okay, is fair for them, the owners, because they have a right to due process, and I feel that an inquiry was held here without them being notified of any suspected allegations, all right, to that, so their due process has not been held.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin.
You're welcome.
Ladies, anything further?
No, I, I really appreciate you coming out, and I do appreciate the extra meeting that we'll have on behalf of our, of the new buyer. I really do, it's just, the home has become a hardship for.
I, I appreciate that.
Really.
However, my sympathies are more with the buyer than they are with the seller, I want you to understand that.
I understand that.
At this point. So, do I hear a motion that we do a site visit this coming Sunday at ten a.m.?
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear another motion with regard to a special meeting on a certain date at the end of the month, which I've forgotten what it is already?
Fifteenth. Uh, I move that we.
The end of the month? Is it the end of the, is it the fifteenth?
Well, we said next week.
You said next week.
I did, and I apologize.
If we can expedite this as best we can.
Okay, so do I hear a motion for the special meeting?
I move that we continue this hearing till a meeting date of August fifteenth.
At seven o'clock. Right, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock to, at a meeting space to be determined.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, so the public comment?
All in favor.
Discussion by me, just for a second, so the public comment part of this case is over. We'll do our inspection, we'll come back, we'll address any issues that we feel we need to address after having performed that inspection, and I would imagine we'll come to a vote on the merits in about a week.
That's awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't, don't predict how this board is going to vote, that's going to get you into trouble. But we will bend over backwards to get this case back before us ASAP.
Thank you. And this inspection, I'm sorry, I was just, this is to inspect for the gas and the electric and do all of those.
The plumbing, yeah.
If we can get, if we can get the building inspector there at the same time.
That would be great.
The rest of it's just for our own edification, we usually do a site visit on these kind of things.
Okay, so if you could please coordinate those inspections with the town, it's going to have to happen pretty quickly.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
So we'll rely on you to take care of that.
I can do that, I'll have that for ten o'clock on Sunday. For the building inspector, he works on Sunday?
No.
He probably will not be with us, these will probably have to be separately scheduled.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, we're doing this for the buyer.
That's fine, I'll get them all in and get them all inspected.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Good evening, ladies.
Now all in favor?
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Now all in favor. Now all in favor. We have to vote.
We have not finished the vote.
Oh, did we vote on the scheduling?
We did not.
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, what did he show? He didn't tell anybody? He popped in when no one was looking.
Saving money.
Oh, come on, you're in the. Can we get a copy of everything in the?
Are you surprised you're asking me to write this letter, Mr. Inspector?
Yeah.
All right, just bear with me for a minute while I collect my papers. Okay. Everybody ready? Ladies and gentlemen, we reach now the continued petition, the main event of the night. Case number thirteen dash nine fifty-eight, the petitioner being Rocky Meadow Development Corporation, Barry McNeil, Care of Shepherd S. Johnson, Jr., Esquire of Shepherd S. Johnson, Jr., and Associates P.C., six twenty-eight Pleasant Street, Suite four twenty-eight, New Bedford, Massachusetts, regarding property located at Zero Purchase Street, AKA Twelve R Great Meadow Drive in Carver. The applicant is appealing the building commissioner's letter dated April three, two thousand and thirteen, withdrawing the building permit that would have granted permission to Noel Southgate Holding to install four thousand one hundred and sixty solar panels located at Twelve R Great Meadow Drive, map fifty-five lot one dash zero. The building commissioner, or the building permit, or the revocation was issued by the building commissioner on March twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, when he issued a cease and desist order. The property is zoned residential agricultural district in accordance to Town of Carver assessors, map fifty-five lot one zero five, one zero seven, one dash six A, and in accordance to the Town of Middleborough assessors, map fifty-five lot one dash zero. This case has already been the subject of two lengthy public hearings. We've probably gone a combination of five to six hours already on this case. We left off at our last meeting, which was on July eleventh, with a motion that carried where the petitioner would send a representative or representatives to an informal meeting to be held amongst them. The director of planning, Mr. Hunter, Ms. Clark, our vice chair, who we designated to attend as our eyes and ears, and also one neighbor representative who it has been brought to my attention is Mr. James Hoffman. Is he here tonight? Mr. Hoffman here, oh, you're right there, I don't know how I missed you. So, at this juncture, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Clark, who I know has not spoken to me about this meeting, and I suspect probably hasn't spoken to anyone else with regard to this meeting yet, who's a board member. And I'd like to have a report from her as to what she heard and what was proposed.
If I had spoken, I might have gotten a little heads up on that one.
Can you turn your mic?
Oh, sorry. Um, we did have the meeting, it lasted about an hour. As most of you might remember, at the previous zoning board meeting, there were four points brought up that Mr. Chairman decided, you know, might be worthy of discussion. One of them was changing the color of the fence, one of them was changing the size of the access road off Great Meadow from twelve feet to twenty feet. Um, a fourth, a third one was the, put the setbacks conforming, basically conforming to the new zoning bylaw that's in place now of two hundred feet. And the fourth one was discussion of possibly mitigating some damages to abotters. Of those four, the applicants were most agreeable to changing the color of the fence to a natural color. They were going to discuss with the planning board the idea of changing the size of the road. Because it, according to one plan, it's twenty feet, and according to a plan further back, which all of us may not have seen, it's twelve feet with berms on each side that would have been planted. So the actual portion of the road, if I'm speaking correctly, was going to be twelve feet wide, and then there was some landscaping, some berms on the side. So the actual size of the road may not have been twenty feet paved the way that we view it. As far as the setbacks, honoring the setbacks, they would not do that because it would have eliminated, I believe, about forty percent of the project itself on, by pushing back from, which is basically the most populated side, the Great Meadow side, by pushing it back. And on the mitigating of damages or possibly offering damages to the thirty-five abotters, they could not offer any direct damages because they're selling one hundred percent of the electricity to a third party, and that would be up to them. percent of the electricity to a third party, and that would be up to them. They have a contract already committing to a hundred percent. However, they did offer a fund, possibly offering a fifty thousand dollar fund. And I believe it would be better if one of, Mr., Jared, could you get up and explain that just a little bit better? Somebody? So, if somebody could just come in and explain the offer of the fund. I haven't got the sheet right in front of me, and I don't want to misspeak. Right, right. It's in my pile.
Okay, sorry.
I was unprepared.
I've got it.
But it was, it's an emergency, an energy efficiency fund that would have a pool of money offered to, half to the abutters and half to the town. Does someone want to explain a little bit about this, or?
Mr. Johnson, feel free.
If I may, thank you very much.
On the issue of this fund.
As you can see from the handout, excuse me, it's an energy efficiency fund of fifty thousand dollars. The mission is to aid the citizens of Carver in reducing their home energy costs and to invest in environmentally sound future, to promote sustainability and economic development. There's a list of eligible expenses that include LED light bulbs, fluorescent-friendly light fixtures, occupancy sensors, HVAC maintenance, programmable thermostats, new windows, products for ceiling ear ducts indoors, Energy Star appliances, radiant burners and insulation products, brass strips for doorways, new furnace or water heaters. Essentially, the terms were to begin at the time that the project receives permission to operate from the utility, and the program would end when the funds have all been dispersed or two years after the start date, whichever occurs first. Eligible persons must be owners of single-family homes located in Carver, and they must be able to demonstrate the status before reimbursement will be made. The priority will be given to residents of the Great Meadow Road neighborhood, and the total amount granted to each eligible individual will be capped at fifteen hundred dollars. Basically, it's a, the homeowners receive a fifty percent reimbursement for the cost of goods. It's a fund that would be managed by the Town of Carver, who would be responsible for reviewing and approving the purchases and distributing the funds.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
And that was the last part on the table. And then we just finished up and we, Jack Hunter, and, like I said, it lasted about an hour, and then we left.
Mr. Hoffman, could you approach? Mr. Johnson, you may step back. Thank you. You've heard what Ms. Clark had to say. You were in attendance at that meeting. Would you agree that what she just said is a fair and accurate representation of what was discussed at this one-hour meeting?
Yes.
Do you have anything further to add?
Pretty much covered what we went over at the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Public comment stage of this hearing is over. However, board members may wish to discuss the latest developments and/or the proposal at large at this time. So, I open the floor to them and any comments or questions they might like to ask, any observations that they might have. Ladies and gentlemen of the board. Questions, concerns, comments, observations, anybody?
To the petitioner, when you were looking through and having a real estate appraisal company come in for looking at the properties, what the value would change, you hired somebody out of New Bedford, where you guys are located. Did you ask a local real estate company to also look into the property values with how they would be affected with solar?
If I may, my understanding is that the gentleman who was selected, he does have an office in New Bedford. He does a lot of work in the southeastern Massachusetts area. As you can see from the qualifications package, that he's been doing this for a long time. He's approved by many banks. He's got all the qualifications necessary to perform this job, which was really quite a lift, if you will, given the short timeline from the time that we met, our last meeting. There was a suggestion that this would be helpful. There was a suggestion from the chairman that there was no need to have brokers or opinions, but only qualified appraisals to offer facts and evidence. So, we offered this real estate appraiser, and I believe you have the report.
We do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, observations? I'll poll the board. Mr. Collins. Ms. Clark.
You know, I'm not, I can't say I have any further questions for you. I feel like I have a good understanding of the project. I've done an awful lot of due diligence on everything that's been submitted as far as your side and the abutter's side. And right now, I feel very confident in the ability to make a decision on this.
Mr. Mueller, anything further from you?
I am good.
I'll get to you, Mr. Maynard. Ms. Mello.
I'm all set.
Mr. Maynard.
No, no further questions.
Do I hear a motion?
Do we need to close the hearing first?
Yeah, let's close the hearing. Everybody satisfied? Let's close the hearing. Motion to close the hearing, somebody?
I'm not allowed to.
I know you're not. I just happened to be looking to my left.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're officially closed, and do I hear a motion at this point?
I do. I move that we affirm the building commissioner's decision of April third, two thousand and thirteen, to rescind the building permit and issue a cease and desist order with respect to the proposed use of property located at Zero Purchase Street, also known as Twelve R. Great Meadow Drive, for a ground-mounted solar array facility, and that we direct the chair to work with town council to prepare a draft decision to be voted upon by the board at its next meeting.
Let me take a second to that motion.
I'll make a second.
Okay. Discussion.
And by affirmation, we mean that the cease and desist was lawfully revoked.
You mean the building permit was law-
The building permit, yeah, was lawfully revoked.
Okay, so we're now in the discussion phase of this motion, which kicks us off in terms of our consideration of this project on the merits. If the board members will indulge me for a few minutes, I have some remarks to make. At the outset, I want to thank everybody here who has participated in these hearings. If I were ever asked to give a civics lesson, I would point to these hearings as an exemplar of how it should be done. Evidence from all the parties, as Ms. Clark pointed out, has been received and weighed carefully by the board members in an atmosphere of mutual respect and cooperation. This is how it should be done, and it was done in highly-charged circumstances. So, I believe all of us should be complimented, all of us, from counsel for the applicant, who so ably represented his client in the best traditions, or the best traditions of our shared profession, to town council, who has provided wise guidance as to the legal issues, some of which chart previously unsailed waters, to members of the public in all of their passionate eloquence, and to members of this board, who have listened intently and have endeavored to follow the evidence of the law to wherever they might take us. Volunteers, all of us are up here. I don't know if you folks in the audience or those watching at home, understand that we have no office at town hall. We have no phone line there. We have no staff, other than our clerk, who we only see once a month. These folks up here, ladies and gentlemen, represent the epitome of selfless public service, and I'm very proud of them. Now, as to the merits of the motion before us. This case came before the board for the first time after planning board review, which was based in part upon the good faith, but ultimately mistaken assumption that the proposed project was allowed as of right. State law clearly indicates that solar projects may be prohibited or regulated if there's a reasonable basis for doing so, and that such projects must be viewed through the prism of health, safety, and welfare. This we have tried to do. We have sat through hours of testimony and have sifted through considerable documentation. And I, speaking only for myself and just for myself at this point, remain troubled that this project is cited in a residential zone and that it is located just a few feet, seventy-nine feet, according to the petitioner, closer than that, according to the neighbors, from the rear lot lines of homes on Great Meadow Drive. I have listened carefully to people who live in this residential neighborhood, who, one after the other, have testified that had they known what was to be cited there, they probably never would have bought in that neighborhood. The applicant has pointed to the fact that there will be screening vegetation around this project. But I have listened carefully as the neighbors and the abutters have testified how even with that screening, the visual impacts of this project will likely affect them negatively. And they've been in uniform agreement that the project is going to be viewed by them as visually unpleasant. I have listened carefully to their concerns regarding diminution of property values, a concept which I personally find is tightly connected to whether a neighborhood is seen as appealing, consistent in its zoning, and safe. I weigh this concern about diminution of property values against the reports submitted by the applicant from its real estate appraiser. I do not afford this report much weight. I find that it is largely anecdotal, quoting from numerous hearsay sources, from parties who had no issues allegedly with solar projects being cited in residential neighborhoods. But this appraisal report contained no comparative sales analyses and no information about how solar projects cited in residential neighborhoods might have affected property values. I've read and reread the peer review in this case, especially the provision having to do with diminution of property values. We know that this peer review stated that, in the author's judgment, there would be little or no impact to property values. And in this section of the peer review, our attention was drawn to a couple of reports, one of which had to do with roof-mounted solar arrays, and the other one having to do with wind energy projects. I find these comparisons to be inept. I understand that there was an attempt at extrapolation here due to the lack of information that this author could bring to our attention. But the fact of the matter is that there was no light-kind comparison or contrast here that was made by the author. No solar array or solar ground array study that he could point to with regard to property values. I recognize and appreciate that the applicant, in its desire to mitigate the negative impacts to this residential neighborhood that the citing of this project will perhaps cause, has offered some money to the abutters and the community at large to be put to use for home efficiency projects. And they should be commended for having made that effort. However, when I weigh this offer, which is not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars per abutter, and there are over thirty residential abutters, I find that it is a small sum that is insufficient to offset the concerns that I harbor as to aesthetics and property values. Put simply, I ask myself, is the effort at mitigation here, limited as it is or would be to fifteen hundred dollars per abutter, enough to offset my concerns with regard to diminution of property value? I believe, based on the testimony and the evidence, that it does not. That it does not. At this juncture, I would like to pause and say that the Town of Carver has a track record of supporting solar. We all know about the Route Forty-four project, and I believe there's another one percolating on one of the local bog properties here in town. So, I think it can be said fairly that the town is prepared to accept these projects when properly cited. I would again draw the attention of the rest of the board to recent decisions issued by the Supreme Judicial Court for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, our state supreme court, if you will, which has recognized that the concept of public welfare, which is really what we're talking about here when I talk about aesthetics and property values, is, quotes, "broad and inclusive," close quotes, and may take into account the preservation of property values, the promotion of public safety, and aesthetic considerations. In a separate case, the Supreme Judicial Court stated that in determining what promotes public health, safety, and welfare, due regard should be accorded to the expression of the affected residents, and may take into account the nature and use of adjoining land. Finally, let me say this. I recognize that if this board should decide in its wisdom to uphold the decision of the building commissioner based upon the motion Ms. Clark just made, to uphold the decision of the building commissioner to revoke the building permit, it may result in an appeal being taken by the developer, as is his right. But in view of the legal issues presented by this case, some of which have not yet been interpreted by the courts previously, I think it's fair to say that an appeal will result in years of litigation previously, I think it's fair to say that an appeal will result in years of litigation and considerable expense, while the land in this case remains undeveloped and the project stuck. Now, I know the developer has considered a residential subdivision for this property, and in my opinion, this would be a more appropriate use. Perhaps the town would be willing to work with the developer on this, and of course, the advantage to the developer would be that it would be able to more quickly maximize its investment in this property. We know the real estate market is turning and improving. Now might be the time to strike on that. But if it goes to an appeal, there will be inevitably a hardening of attitudes, which happens whenever hard-fought litigation occurs. So, I ask the developer to consider that. In my opinion, I find that the applicant has not carried its burden of proof. We know, again, from another state supreme court, that the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate an entitlement to a building permit, and in my humble opinion, it has not carried that burden of proof on the issue of public welfare. Parenthetically, I would add that it has been brought to my attention that there is now pushback in the legislature with regard to these large ground-mounted solar array projects cited in residential zones, and I can tell you for what it's worth that there is now a bill being discussed in the legislature, as we sit here this evening, that would call for a moratorium on all of these projects in residential zones, as, according to the bill that's being proposed, they present a, quotes, "clear and present danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Commonwealth, its environment, and the future of residential neighborhoods." So, this proposed bill would ask for an immediate moratorium on all current and future photovoltaic proposals in residential zones. We'll let them sort that out in Boston. For tonight, I have completed my remarks. I will vote to uphold the decision of the building inspector to revoke the building permit in this case. Anyone else?
I'm good.
I'm good. Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from this vote since I was late to the original meeting.
Ms. Mello, we'll start with you.
I vote to uphold the, um...
But you don't have to enter any votes right now. Do you have any further comments or discussion, either concerning what I said, Ms. Clark said, or anything else that might be in your mind at this point?
No.
Mr. Mueller.
I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Clark.
Well spoken.
Mr. Collins.
Couldn't have said it any better.
Hearing no further discussion. On the motion, which is to uphold the decision of the building commissioner to revoke the building permit under the circumstances of this case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. And the decision of the building commissioner is upheld.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think we need a second on her motion to start out with.
No.
Got another motion?
We didn't.
No.
Ms. Clark made the motion, and Mr. Mueller seconded it.
Eric did.
I must have missed that.
Are we good, Mr. Collins?
He spoke afterwards.
You did, too.
The other part of this motion, of course, was to have town council, Mr. Corbo, who has sat quietly through this proceeding, but I'm sure has many thoughts circulating in his active brain, to work with me on drafting an appropriate decision. So, since we did not actually have that part of the motion specifically voted on, and I think that was part of your original motion, Ms. Clark, just for the sake of proper protocol, a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I will work with Mr. Corbo on that piece. Any further matters before the board this evening that anybody wants to discuss? Seeing that there are none, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Could I just ask when our next meeting is, and will we be reviewing that decision at that time?
I think that Mr. Corbo and I may need longer than a week.
No, no, I meant like the September meeting.
Well, that is our next meeting.
That's our next meeting.
No, the next meeting is August 15.
Next week is the special one.
For September?
Yeah.
Our next...
The next meeting is...
Oh, it's 15.
Holy crap, I lost the morning. Our next meeting is for, to discuss the...
Right.
That's next Thursday, the 15th.
But I meant our September meeting.
Our September meeting would be September 12.
That will not be here. I'm sorry, September 12?
Will not be present.
Ms. Mello will not be here.
We should have a quorum still.
Yeah, we still have a small quorum.
Is there anything further that we need to discuss? We all good on our dates?
Just clarification. There's only five people voting, and he's one of the six members to vote on. Does he have to be here to vote on the decision?
For the September meeting, right?
He's not going to be here for the September meeting on the 12th.
Well, what case do we have on for September 12?
Just, you're going to vote on, aren't you going to vote on, you're going to look at this, or probably, how are you handling the decision?
Well, we'll figure it out. I mean, if it's not ready by then, then...
We have to move it. Do you want to move it now?
We may need to move it to accommodate his schedule.
Are we talking about it now, or no?
Yeah, why don't we talk about it now? The next, shh, 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 just let us figure out this last date. What date would you be available in September?
Any other date but the 12th.
Any other date but the 12th.
Do you want to push it back a week to the 19th?
The 11th. You want to do the 11th?
I want to push it back a week to the 19th, to give you more time to do it.
11th is fine. That's Patriot Day.
September 11. September 19th is the next, the following Thursday.
Is that a holiday?
That's fine, I can be here the 19th.
The 19th, then.
19th?
Okay.
Nope, I'm in California.
Well, we can't, we can't have that.
11?
The 11th.
How about the 11th?
The 11th.
Great.
I'm sorry, did we say September 11? I can be here, but you probably don't need me.
Yeah, you'll give me a decision. Okay, we'll vet it over the fall. The 11th?
Yep.
11th is fine.
It's a Wednesday.
September 11th is Thursday.
That would be for the comeback meeting on the decision and accepting the written decision.
So, 7:00 on the 11th?
Yes. Of course, we have the other quick dates for the second case that we heard tonight.
That's the 15th, next Thursday.
And Sunday for the site visit.
Sunday is the 11th.
Right.
Sunday is the one.
So, is there anything further?
Just confirm, Sunday is 10:00 in the morning, correct?
10:00 in the morning. Anything else?
September 11th is Patriot Day?
Yes.
Is that anything yet?
No.
We good?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?